In the corner. I screamed the first line. No one ever knows what this is.
I would like to invite those present that go to this regular meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken has been provided
Recording in progress.
in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this regular meeting of Thursday, August 8, 2024 was given by publication of the annual meeting notice of the authority with amendments as necessary and was sent to the Jersey Journal Starlet's and Starletter on Tuesday, July 30, 2024. Add notification to the general public of said meeting and send to the city clerk of Hoboken on Tuesday, July 30, 2024 with a copy of the agenda to be posted on Fulton Board in City Hall, Hoboken Library, and Hoboken Police Department and posted on the authority website on Tuesday, July 30, 2024. I direct the minutes of this meeting to state that I have announced that an ad hoc notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Public?
You're welcome.
Yes, roll call director.
There's the networks. President Anthony Forbes. Barbara Reyes.
President.
Jean Rodriguez.
Feeny?
Feeny's there.
She's muted. You're muted, Feeny.
She's there.
She's there. If not, she's there.
Yeah, she's there.
I think she doesn't know how long it'll get off.
Yeah, she can come off mute on the phone. Catherine.
Director, you could continue.
Michael Russo.
Present.
James Sanford. Erica Seitzman.
Present.
Feeny, you there?
Yeah, yeah.
And Rev Forbes is also here. Can the record show that as well? Commissioner Forbes, can you hear us?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Luz Marrero. I'd just like to remind everyone, we do not go back and forth, and everyone has five minutes for their time.
Good afternoon. My name is Luz Marrero.
Could you please spell your name for the record? This is the court reporter.
Sure. L-U-Z-M-A-R-R-E-R-O.
Just speak more directly into the microphone.
L-U-Z. I don't think it's on. I don't think it's on. It's not, ahora.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good afternoon. I'm here just to ask a question. I've been going through a lot in my apartment. I wanted to know whether if someone beneath you or above you has bedbugs, if you are entitled to get the pipe, because the only pipe that leads to whether up or down from me, it's the pipe from the bathroom, and it only has the cover. And I don't want to put nobody's business out there, but I am concerned because I was washing my mouth and here from the pipeline fell a bedbug into my sink. Thank God that I was there and I was able to put the hot water and flush it down. But I've had twice to come to my house to check. For the grace of God, I don't have any. But I wanted to, I had asked Sammy to see if they could put that foam on the pipeline because that pipeline is the heat in the winter. So I asked to see if they could put like a foam on the top and then the bottom. So I had to go to Home Depot and get some liquid so that I could put a towel on the top and then the bottom and spray it with the spray that I bought. And the guy, when he came, he said to me that I had done a good job because I really can't afford to have bedbugs in my house. I mean, I have a lot of stuff in my house. I don't deny it. They have talked about it, that I have a lot of stuff in my house, and I'm okay with it. Because you know what? Right now, I don't have a linen closet. So I have to put all my curtains, all my towels, everything in bins. So of course, where am I going to put them? I have them in my room. They're nice to me, okay? I have a whole lot, because where am I going to put them? What Puerto Rican lady doesn't have curtains, extra curtains, extra towels, extra bedspreads in their house? You tell me. I'm not going to sit with one curtain or one bedspread because I have a small apartment. My apartment unfortunately doesn't have a closet, a linen closet. So I have to do what I have to do. So my concern was is my health. Because I suffer from diabetes, I suffer from asthma, so the chemical that I bought, I had to move into my living room. I'm sleeping on the floor in my living room. Because I had to, I sprayed first before he came. So when he came, he told me, you don't have any, because he put some type of mechanical thing that attracts them if they have, if I do have any. For the grace of God, I don't have any. Today, he came to inspect that little gadget. He says, you're clear. I said, thank God. But the fact that I had to go out of my way to get up on a ladder and do that pipeline is uncouthful. I believe that I don't want nobody to tell me, oh, your neighbor from upstairs or your neighbor from downstairs have bedbugs. That's not in my, that's not in my business. But at least if you do know that they do have it, consider me and put that corking on the pipeline. That's all I want. Thank you.
Adrian Holman.
Madam Chair, if I could just interrupt very quickly, because Terry's not here, just have the record reflect that Commissioner Sanford arrived at 7:07.
Absolutely. Terry, did you hear the lawyer? Can the record reflect that Commissioner Sanford arrived at 7:07?
I already have a notice. Thank you. A D R I E N N E R E W L I N S. In July, end of July, or beginning of, end of June, beginning of July, my daughter's uncle was found at 400 Marshall Drive. The apartment that he was found in happened to be technically lived in, but not by the leaseholder. I want to know, were their leases done every year since 2018 for this unit? Because I believe the unit leaseholder left in 2018 or 2019. Was there any rent collected on that unit? And during inspections, why didn't anybody notice that the actual leaseholder was not there? And why did they allow the people to continue to stay in that unit? Because they were not legally on the lease? I believe the Housing Authority is partially responsible for his death because you didn't do your due diligence to make sure that the person in that unit was actually there and their lease was being done correctly by him instead of a ghost or whoever was signing the lease every year. And if there was no lease signed after 2018 or 2019, to me, that's abandonment, and why wasn't that unit locked so that no one would be able to be in there? That's something that the Housing Authority needs to investigate. There are other units that are being subletted that if the leaseholder is not here, the lease should not be renewed, and they need to check on who's in that unit and why are they there? Because I believe if he didn't have access to this unit, maybe he would have had access somewhere else. But for this particular case, if he didn't have that place to go, maybe somebody else wouldn't have had him in their unit, no matter what happened in there. I don't know why. I don't know how. All I know is that housing didn't do their due diligence to make sure that the leaseholder was there. And residents, when they pay their rent, they should have to go to the window, and it should only be head of household or an authorized person deemed authorized by the Housing Authority. In my case, it would be me or one of my sons. That would be the ones paying the rent. No one else. Anyone else paying the rent, unless it's approved by the Housing Authority, it should not be accepted. And these are, these are big problems that need to be taken care of. Also, the ramp that leads up to the mailroom, I sent a text with a photo. And before that, I went into the main office to have the secretary call it out, call someone and let them know that it's a danger. It's peeling up so much that if you trip on it, you're going to fall and hit your head on the wall. Now, it's not my job to fix it. I did my part as a resident by reporting it to the main office. I shouldn't have to fill out any papers or do anything else. I come in, I tell you what's wrong. It should get noted and taken care of on your rent. And if I or any one of my children trip and fall on it and get injured, because I reported it, and if it doesn't get done in a reasonable amount of time and somebody gets hurt, Housing Authority should get sued for it.
Adrian, what was just the street that the person was found on?
Harrison Street, 400 Harrison.
400 Marshall Drive.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, 400 Marshall Drive. My apologies, Terry. 400 Marshall Drive.
Thank you.
Francine Laxton?
Hello. F R A N C I N E L A D S O N. Francine Laxton. I have a question. I'm looking for answers. My manager explained it to me, but I really need to know. I want to know. I work for a Legion Charter School, and I've been working there 25 years, and I never had a problem where, when June come, I work a 10-month base. And now, when I went to, in the end of June, the beginning of July, I went to bring my paperwork from my job stating that I'm a 10-month worker. I don't work for the summer. But Housing Authority didn't send me anything stating that, oh, we're not lowering your rent anymore. I don't work those two months. So I just need a better understanding. That's all.
Thank you, Francine. Are you burning out? More? Yes.
Should we bring her the mic?
She got it. She got it.
Hello, everyone. My name is Vernell Gorham. G V E R N E L L G O R H A M. I'm having a problem with my closets. You know, I tell somebody to come and fix it, but they never comes up and they never show up.
I'm sorry, what was the issue?
I said, my closet doors is off the hinges, and nobody will come by and fix it. I told them to come by, but they never show up. And also, well, this is my problem, but my closet doors is not fixed, and I told them to come by and fix it. And also, my smoke alarm was ringing one day, and I told them to come and fix it, but they never showed up either, and my son-in-law had to go and fix it for me. My smoke alarm. So this is my problem. Thank you.
Lea Diaz?
Hello. L E A N N A. And my last name is Diaz. Lea Diaz. I live in apartment 9G. My question is, why do maintenance lie so much? Okay, they all have a different story, and nothing ever gets done. I have a window, okay, that's been, first it needed a chain. That's all it needed. Aska, I told him. And it never got fixed, so my window keeps coming down. Finally, they sent somebody in, and the guy broke my window, went out, got some, another frame, put another window in that's rotting. Sammy came up. I told him about it. He says, oh, no, 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 it's not rotting. Soon as he tried to pull it up, the whole thing came apart. So my window's broken now. Now, I've been telling them, because this has been three years now, all right, since May 2021. We're 2024 now. And they keep telling me, oh, we don't make the windows anymore. Oh, we waited for the contractor. Oh, the window's in, but we don't have anybody to put it in. This is what I go through. I pay my rent every month. I don't know why they doing this. The last time it was my cabinets. They were rotting. The wood was rotting, okay? Roaches all over the place in my kitchen. I had to go to City Hall to get the job done, because they refuse to fix it. I go through this since I've been living here. I've been here 15 years, and I keep going through this here, and I don't understand. Maintenance, they're not doing their job. They're not. I'm sorry, but they're not. So now, I also have a bathtub, and I have mold inside my bathroom, okay, on all the tubes. They're telling me that. Oh, they don't make them anymore. Oh, they can't change them. Why can't you change them? You got to replace them with something. I'm not going to be inhaling all that mold. I have lupus, which grabs my lungs, okay, which I have collapsed a long time ago. I collapsed, and I can't be breathing, stuff like that. I have high blood pressure, and I'm a senior now. And I think that people here should be treated fairly. They treat us like garbage, pure garbage, and I'm tired of it. And I'm hoping that you guys will hear me, that you're really listening to me tonight, and help me and get this resolved as soon as possible, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kathleen Feeny?
Yes, hello. Feeny is F as in Frame, E E N E Y. Kathleen is K A T H L E N. Last thing I wanted to do was walk 11 blocks tonight from 13th Street. Oh, no, I've been walking those blocks back home. But I'm here tonight because the last time I saw this board was where I live, Fox Hill, July 11th. At that time, I presented information I had about Commissioner Chairwoman Reyes selling illegal food. She laughed at me. And then I stayed until 11, when the commissioners all decided I did not present the right information. That was July for me. I was depressed for two weeks, did not do anything with my friends, just stayed sick. But because I'm tenacious and because I'm intelligent, because I'm a widow and a cancer survivor, by August 2nd, I was back, and I wrote an extended letter on August 2nd that was emailed to Director Reco, to Mayor Abala, to all of the city council people, to Hudson, Washington, to the Attorney General of the State of New Jersey. Then that weekend of August 2nd, I was organizing my research, and I came across something. I thought, oh, well, this is something to add to. I'm here tonight to ask Commissioner Reyes to resign and her Vice Commissioner to resign. And the reason for that is because it turns out that Erica Seitzman, Commissioner Seitzman, you've been condoning the sale of illegal food. Now, if you're going to go back and tell me again that my information's wrong, anybody on Instagram, anybody here on Instagram, anybody out there on TV land on Instagram or anybody in the audience, because if you are, all you have to do is go to Instagram where that little button thing is, and you type in Barbara's cooking. Ms. Reyes, here is your site. You are still selling food. And then you can connect this, and you know this is Barbara Reyes's site because here's her name, B. Reyes, and this is where she gets people to pay her. Now, I did report to also to the Health Department, and I got a report back from the Health Department. So I sent my first letter on August 2nd, my detailed letter, scrupulous letter. I'm a former journalist. Everything's right. On that Monday, I brought up about Commissioner Seitzman and her role in all of this. And then it turns out that on August 6th, Commissioner Reyes had been contacted by the Health Department, and she said, quote, "Thank you for bringing this to my attention. As I was not aware that selling food was considered a cottage food operation, I would like to inform you that I have not sold food since May 2024. Therefore, the concern regarding the cottage food operation is no longer applicable." So you were selling food in June. I have proof. The proof is in that letter. Ms. Reyes, I don't know what you're doing, but what you're doing is illegal, and it's not just that you were selling the food. You weren't reporting your income. You were working out of your HUD home. You think if I did that, Kathy Feeny, nobody, that I wouldn't be kicked out or I wouldn't be sent to jail? I don't know what to say to you. I mean, I'm older than you. I'm trying to. Oh, and I want to tell you one more thing. I'm sorry to go backwards, but my dad was in the Army. He was in World War II, and I grew up in the Army. I just have to tell you, when you say, let's do the salute to the flag, it is the pledge of allegiance. I am sorry. Please, stop saying that, because children might be watching this. Soldiers salute the flag. People salute the flag at a funeral. It is the pledge of allegiance. And the other thing, Director Reco, is on the page where you have the commissioner's information and you list the different meetings, for more than a year, maybe longer, there's never a transcript and there's never an agenda. I do not know why you guys think you can get away with this stuff. And I will tell you one more thing. I don't know. You guys ever heard of someone called Al Capone? You know how Al Capone was caught, Ms. Reyes? Al Capone was caught by the IRS. And Ms. Reyes, if you don't think I've turned you into the IRS, you're not even. So I hope you'll do the right thing every time. And you too, Ms. Seitzman, because you've been, you've been condoning her ever since May 10th, 2024, when Damon Murray had his funeral on Washington Street. You guys were fooling around with Barbara's cooking. You were eating her food. You were posting absolutely delicious. Well, you know something? Everybody who went to that funeral was heartbroken, and we were dying inside. Why would you launch your business that day? Was it to make a lot of money? You know, there's a listeria outbreak. Do you know what listeria is? You're very welcome. Thank you, too.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jessica Rivera. I'm a tenant of 540. J E S S I C A R I V E R A. And I'm a tenant of 540 Marshall Drive. My concern today is just the fact that I work for the Hoboken Board of Education and was just notified about last month that our rent arrangement has changed. And I'm just here to question like, why and what's going on? Because people from the Board of Education, like, we don't work at all for the month of August, and we were just notified that our rent, like, years prior, our rent has never changed. It's always been adjusted because we don't work, like, the amount of hours we do during the regular school year, we don't get paid anything. We receive about like two checks for the month of, for the summer months and do not work entirely the month of August. And I was just notified like by my site manager that our rent is supposed to stay the same, and I'm just like confused as to why. When did this come about? Why weren't we notified? I have two children, and I don't even get paid enough in the summer to pay my rent. Like, the amount that it seriously is, my checks are not even that amount. My kids have to eat. I have other bills, like internet, for them to do their summer work. Like, my bills have to stay on for them to be connected to their Chromebooks. And I'm just very confused as to where am I paying money that I don't have for my rent? And why weren't we properly notified of this issue prior to us, to this happening? Because this has never been the issue, and I'm just confused. And I'm not sure if I'll get answers here today, or like someone can just possibly follow up with me as to why this is happening. Like, I just need answers. That's all. Thank you.
We are now over. Public portion, Director, could you move on to your report?
I will. Thank you. And I think during, during the course of my report, we'll have some of these questions answered and addressed. But I'd love to start out with the report on the 311 Community Room Drop-In Center. That's been slowly building the past few months for our youth. It has been named the 10 Reasons Youth Center in honor of Nunu. It continues to operate successfully on Monday and Wednesday evenings. The community has donated two TVs. We put in a Wi-Fi. We've got a ping pong table, a pool table. It's really, really happening over there. I really appreciate.
Director, we also have our TV. We will drop it off this week.
True. Thank you, Reverend. Thank you, Reverend. That's tremendous. And that's the spirit we found there, is people are donating things, people are making it happen. Ms. Reyes, Ms. Marrero are there, just making things happen, bringing food. It's incredibly positive for our youth. It's that drop-in center that our youth that has nothing to do in the evenings could just drop in. And as it grows, we hope to expand.
That's correct, Director. I just want to add, I want to let everybody know that when we started back in May, right after the incident happened, we started with three children and two days. We opened two days in August, which was the 5th and the 7th, and we had 56 kids already attend the program. And our youngest individual, our youngest child is six years old. Our oldest is probably 24 years old.
So it's really, it's really a great thing to watch. They're controlling it. They're running it. It's their word on what they want, what they want to do, and it's slowly but surely, as planned, just getting better and better month by month. So I'm very, very pleased with what's happening over there. We do have some positions open that will be filling soon. By the way, we're kind of looking for the beginning of the next fiscal year, the Public Relations Specialist Development Director and Accounting Clerk. I've got great news on Hoboken Housing Forward. As we go by our step-by-step process, we did receive four responses to our RFP for Development Partners. Firsted, Penrose, PRC, and RPM, some well-known names nationally. I have appointed Developer Selection Committee. They had their first meeting on Thursday, August 1st. It was an organizational meeting, went very well. The Developer Selection Committee is led by Frank. Thank you, Frank, for being Chair of that committee. We've got Chris Brown, the Hoboken City Planning Director. I said, oh, it doesn't need here, but Chris has been coming. April Harris, our community member. Many of you know her. Joe McDonald, an H A R, H A A Resident and Resident Advisory Board Member. Dave Edwards, our Commissioner. Jack Nadina, our H A A Maintenance Supervisor, and Emel Kudurithar, our H A A CFO. That makes up the selection committee. I think it's a very well-rounded group. It's a group that can bring financial expertise, bring physical expertise on the condition of our units, bring expertise from the community, the spiritual community, as well as our resident community from the city, so they will be with us step by step. With Chris Brown as the Planning Director, and of course, the most, one of the very important things with Housing Authority, Frank as the Management Director, that can, that can deal with management issues. Frank is the Management Director that can deal with management issues as they are asked and come up. We do also have some advisory folks that are open, that don't necessarily have to come to every meeting, but when called upon by that group. There's Ellis Wilson Henry from HUD, Lisa Petrowski from NMW Financial, Harold Fitzpatrick, and Jonathan Flugstedt, who's with Reno and Kavanaugh Attorneys. So that group can call on any of those folks for guidance, advice. If they have questions regarding the proposals, if they want something clarified, they can turn to that group. I was at the first meeting to offer the Housing Authority's total support in anything that group thinks it needs to do. If that group thinks it needs to go see another development that these folks have developed or if they need similar information, we're at their beck and call. I cannot be on that group. Thank goodness, I don't have to work that hard. Because this is going to be some real work.
That's for sure.
Getting through that is going to be some real work. So they're going to make that happen. And we can't wait to see the results of that. Again, this is significant. We've been working toward this for so long. We've put in so much effort to do a good, fair, equitable across the board. RFP, and that mission is to make a recommendation to this board to approve entering into an agreement with the developer partner. Once we've entered that agreement with the developer partner, the city will then give a final approval of the plan. So we've got a couple steps coming up, right? And that committee will continue to meet over the next 60 days. Hope to have a recommendation to the HHA Board in October or November. I was clear with them that take the time you need. Don't dog them. Get moving. We're excited about moving forward, but make sure you make the right choice. Also, we are continuing our regular meetings with the Enterprise, HUD, and HHA team. Our contract with the Consultant for Future Capital Needs is in process. We have had a number of meetings with them and they're working on a final draft of their report. And the Enterprise team, HUD, EJP, and our staff are working on our needs for the future. I am really, really proud to announce to all of you that don't know that the NJ Future Nonprofit, which was funded in 1987 to advance smarter land use and growth policies in New Jersey, it is the leading, in fact, the leading organization promoting innovative and quality growth in New Jersey. They follow New Jersey construction, innovation, what's going on in building. They created the Smart Growth Awards Program a long time ago to recognize annually the best in development and preservation efforts across the state. And I'm proud to say we won this year. I can't tell you how proud I am of that. All that work, the strategic plan, the work our residents did with us on developing that, the countless meetings, it showed. It showed. And it was recognized by other professionals across New Jersey that we put our heart and soul into this, into the strategic plan and the redevelopment plan. So on October 22nd, Commissioner Reyes and I will be going and receiving this award and saying a thing or two to the gathered professionals. Folks are invited. They only give us two free tickets. And other tickets are like 150 bucks. So, but, you're welcome to come. It's going to be in New Brunswick Performing Arts Center on October 22nd. So I'll keep you updated next meeting, too. But it really shows the great work that's gone into those plans. Our project-based voucher program, we have received a response on both the VAS and Signal occupancy. We've sent a letter to both proposers. And once those issues are addressed, the proposals will be brought in to the committee and to the board. We are pushing, pushing. We hope to have that next month. We will be writing a new letter out to those proposers next week with some additional requirements that they need to fill for us. On August 21st, HUD will be here for their, what they call Inspire inspections. They used to be React inspections, they're now Inspire inspections at CCG. They've done every place else, but they're going to be at Christopher Columbus Gardens on August 21st. I continue to meet with residents on a personal basis through our intake appointment system. And I encourage any resident that has ongoing issues to reach out to their manager or Mr. Frank or myself. If the issue is not resolved and you wish to meet with me personally, please go ahead and schedule an appointment. Most of you have my cell phone number. If you don't, ask the person next to you because then they probably got it, right? So I will meet with you. And some of the issues that came up tonight, although we're going to be addressing the 10-month pay issue tonight when Frank gets up to talk, and some of those maintenance issues, please don't be shy. Call my number. I've got this thing with me 24/7. Please leave a message, text, because there's no reason that this Housing Authority shouldn't be giving you service long before you need to get here. You know, Liz, I see you. Come and see me. And we'll get this done for you. We're serious about it. Please schedule that appointment. Do understand that if you schedule a regular appointment, it might be a couple of weeks till you get to see me because we schedule ahead of time and I do meetings for a living, right? Housing for Hoboken. They met on July 16th. We reviewed our progress on the Hoboken Housing Forward Initiative and note again that applications for community members to join us as a trustee are published and are due back next week at the Housing Authority. Special capital projects, defensible space fencing is in the permitting process. This is for behind the buildings from 208 Harrison all the way to 400 Marshall, separating those areas from each other. That will be under construction soon. We expect to start before, definitely before the snow flies. The Harrison Courtyard Project has been rebid and we hope to talk about that in just a little while because it's in front of you. We are replacing the ramp in the back of 310 Jackson. We do expect that to be done very soon. That's all they have to do now is the handrails. So once that gets done, that big ugly ramp in front of the building will be gone. But we needed it for a couple people that need that ramp in the meantime. The Adams Gardens generator is complete, except we're waiting on PSE and G to adjust their gas pressure so we can get that generator running. As part of the special allocation of capital funding for Harrison Gardens, the security camera installation and the hallway stairwell refurbishment is well underway. They're working. We got dust flying. They're making it happen. Couple of residents, sorry, they sometimes leave a bucket in the middle of the stairwell or something. But we're on them over that. But it's progressing well. So again, once that's done, we're going to have security cameras on each floor at Harrison Gardens, each floor. We're going to have food cameras in the elevators. And then last but not least, yeah. It's really going to make a difference. We're going to be able to see what's going on in that building. Our exterior door replacement, we hope to have that in front of you tonight. And when we get to that, I'll have a little more to say about that topic. We are working with the City of Hoboken on the planned renovations to the Mama Johnson Field. We are waiting for this year's, what's known as the Community Development Block Grant Funding to get in. That's going to fund this. But we've been working with them. There's going to be addition of a scorekeeper box behind home plate, renovations to our postal building to include restrooms, and relocation of some of the mailboxes. We do, in addition, this year, expect to receive CDVG funding at the same time from the city, thank the city, for not only the above renovations I just mentioned, but some security upgrades to include gates at the horseshoe, lighting, playground resurfacing, and rodent-resistant receptacles. We're looking at getting rid of all of our dumpsters. So, you know, the rats are in the party at night. They're happy to be there. They're making it happen. They won't be able to get in anymore. So they won't have a food source. If they don't have a food source, they go away, all right? So that's the next major thing we can do with the rodent control. Because I know it's frustrating, residents. Management report, we are doing, waiting for all the final dust to settle on the HACMA regulations. They originally said we had to do them now, then they delayed it. Then they just came out today with some new information. We're delayed right now. Any illegally parked vehicles, please report them. And I would like Frank to get up and talk to us about his management report attachments. And Frank, if you would, kind of first maybe address the, what we're calling the 10-month issue with the 10-month pay cycle.
Absolutely. Thank you, Director. I guess the very first step is to address the fact that it was something that we found that was not being done properly. So as we go through our daily routine, sometimes we come across things that maybe have been done wrong for some time. Unfortunately, as we do see things, we must fix them at that point and then make them right from that point forward. So I do understand in particular what the ladies that were here in the room saying because as they've been used to a particular way of doing things, it's different. What I will offer, and I spoke to the two folks, Jessica and the other lady that spoke, I will reach out to you tomorrow and I'll meet with you one-on-one. We've already met with some families, but let me get to it. So what it is, is it's not a new regulation. Under the HUD program, every household must pay 30% of their annual income. Not of their monthly income, of their annual income. So the way that we arrive at that, on a regular household, let's say, we take a pay stub and we annualize. We take a look at their income and then we say, this is, based on this paycheck, we annualize what your amount will be. And it's usually pretty close. And, or we go by a year-to-date amount from your taxes. And that's also another way to go. But the point of that is that when you annualize an amount, you come out with what your monthly payments would be. How employees who work 10 months should be calculated is, if, let's say, that tenant came in in January and they were employed, let's say that's the beginning of their year, they would present their pay stub that they're currently working at that moment and we would annualize their rent. In that particular case, their rent would be X amount of dollars. Come the summer, they would come back to us and we would say, okay, we need to now give you a rent adjustment down because you have no income for this month. And we would then, at that moment, again, annualize, which is, if it's zero, it would be zero. And then we repeat the exercise again in September. What happened and what was happening was that folks were getting a rent amount that was not annualized. It was just taking the full 10 months salary, dividing it by 12, which is not the way to annualize income. Annualizing income would result in a higher amount in those working months and a lower amount in the summer months. So what resulted was that folks were paying a lower amount in the months that they should have paid more and then still getting a break in the summer. Now, because we do understand that it's something that it was on us, on the Housing Authority, we're not saying to folks that you have to repay for the unpaid income that you would have been paying for all those years that it was calculated incorrectly. What we're saying is that as of this moment forward, we just need to make sure that it's corrected. However, again, to use the example of the ladies who are here tonight, we do understand that if this is brand new and your circumstances right now, we will work with you and we will find a way. So I don't want you to worry about what you were saying here about your bills. We will work with you. I will talk about that tomorrow, how we were going to work with the families. But at the end of the day, what it comes down to is that if you were to get an annualized income calculation and then a summer calculation or if you did a spread-out amount over the year, both amounts bring you to the same yearly out-of-pocket rent. The choice is, do you pay higher in the months that you're working and nothing in the summer? Or do you pay an even amount, month after month, for 12 months? So that's the choice that's in front of you. But I do understand, it's a tough concept. I do understand that it's something that is affecting folks in real time right now and we will work with you. And what I ask of you is that you understand that it's not something new and that it's unfortunately something that the Housing Authority, for whatever reason, not done properly. But we are addressing it and we are making it right moving forward. So that's what the 10-month issue is.
I think we've met with about five families so far on the issue and they've all walked out understanding.
And each five different, right? That's the other thing, which is what?
I please encourage you to come in and see us. And we'll spend as much time as we need to, to number one, explain. And number two, come out with something equitable. There is no way we're going to put you in a position where you can't buy food or can't take care of your kids. There's no way we're going to do that. So come in and see us. We'll work that out with you.
And then moving on to our monthly report. As some of our tenants alluded to, we had a tough month. We did have a lot of people pass away, a lot of our residents. Unfortunate, untimely deaths for a lot of people. So our hearts and our condolences go out to all the families who have lost loved ones in this last couple of weeks because we do understand it's just been very difficult. It leaves a hole in the household. It makes people feel, when they come home, it's awful. So we want you to know that the Housing Authority, our heart goes out to you and that we're willing to work with any family that's going through it right now. So as far as that goes, that does tie in directly to our report. That's why I also need to mention it. We are on track to hit 98 this month. I believe we already did it. As long as we stay there, if we don't have any situations, we are at 98, which is something that we've been, the Director's been shooting for such a long time and I think that we're going to get big kudos. The state of New Jersey right now is 90.4. We are 97.1, 97.2. So we're beating the state right now. And I'm just so proud of the team and everyone who's been pushing. Again, we do get to that point now where it's going to be a little bit tougher with these transfers and these moves. But we will continue to work with everybody as best as possible. And I do want to thank that there are some families out there who gave their spots up. They were next for some of the families who went through some tragedy recently. So that just goes to show that even amongst our residents, it's not just us. We can help each other. So thank you for those who understood and gave their spot. We're going to not forget about you. You'll be next. So just keep that in mind. We had a really good bump up in repayment agreements. So we last, now we have $654,000 in repayment agreements. And in general, the accounts receivable is still maintaining at 34%, which is still high, but better than we had seen. We've seen as high as 45 in the last couple of months. So I do have that six-month snapshot that's there. Our averages continue to be 97 on both RAD and PH for the last six months. So that's great. And as the Director alluded, HACMA changes have been put on hold temporarily, but it's still coming. So we continue to move all the hard work that the managers and the tenants had done to get us to this point. Please don't let that up. Let's keep going. From everything I see, we're up to like December, folks. So that's pretty fantastic for where we normally are. So we're just going to close that part out strong. And I want to say a special note that our managers have been working together on the files and I thank them for that. I know that they're looking for ways to improve those file conditions from the audit findings. So please keep pushing for that. And as the Director said, just keep coming into the office. And if you need to speak to us, come see Liliana and she will put you on the calendar to speak to us.
The very last line, and congratulations on the repayment and everything you're doing. That's great. But you know, I'm a math person. And if you look at the last line, over one month, it says the average is 241. But there's not a number in the six months that's less than. All those numbers are substantially bigger than 241.
You're looking at the six-month one?
I'm looking at the tab on the floor of the very last line. It says, "over one month." And it says the average is 240. Sorry, are you there?
Yeah.
So it says the average is 241. But every month, over those six months, is substantially above 241. So how is that?
Maybe the formula didn't carry that stuff.
Yep. And any, because it went up this last month, too.
As far as the over one month?
Yeah.
That continues to fluctuate. You see that from the beginning, that it'll keep. There's really no way for those to think that someone's going to stop seeing the improvement.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else, Frank? Thank you. On maintenance report, we have changed our work order call-in system to go to one number. Now, that doesn't mean if you don't have, if a work order is late or hasn't been done, that doesn't mean you still don't go to your manager, right? It just means the call-in is one number. It just means the call-in is one number. So if you've got an issue with a work order, please go to your manager and tell her, him, or her about that, so they can expedite that with us. So just because we've changed that number, doesn't mean you don't still go to your manager. Apartment, attachment five is our plumbing issue report, very ably led by Samuel. Our elevator report, glad to report that right now, we have no elevators that are down, or at least of last night. We did have some problems...
Sorry, Director, you're out. Director, you're out.
Is that better? Hello?
Yes, it is.
Um, we, um, we did have some elevators that were down over the past couple of months. Thank you, residents. I, I know it's hard in the buildings with one elevator, but when you have one elevator and the elevator goes down, you know, we, we, sometimes it takes till a couple of weeks to get those parts and to make that happen. So just another reason that we need to redevelop our properties, because we just can't keep going like this over time. You need two elevators in a building, because elevators are machines, and they are going to break now and then. We continue to work on special emergency and preventative repairs. As time allows, our maintenance crew has been making progress on painting and repairing lobby areas and stairwells. I talked to a couple of residents earlier before the meeting, and we're going to get to all the buildings. We're, we're getting there. So we're going to get to your building, Ms. Andrew, we're going to make that happen. Sammy, do you want to say anything about where you've been on the hallways and stairwells? Sammy left, huh?
Yeah, just stepped out.
He knows what I'm going to say his name. He's, he's got a way about him. So, so suffice it to say, we're, we're working on that. We have been putting considerable time and effort in to keep the common areas and offices and community rooms cool. We apologize about a couple of them, but we got them back up and running. We are going to be doing a major tree trimming project this fall across the whole Housing Authority. Finance Committee has been rescheduled for September. A revision to the board reporting system is in process through the Finance Committee. We are still working, and this gets repetitive, but again, it's not hurting us for the NGH MFA Building Project Closeout. We're working on our Housing Choice Voucher budgets for project-based vouchers, and Emil is working hard on contract management and publication of RFPs and RFQs. And since he's sitting right across from me, Daniel can't say, "Look." So Daniel, you want to do your Resident Services report?
Yes, thank you.
You've been MIA, by the way.
I'm going to do a second down, too.
Thank you, Frank. Hello, everyone?
Thank you so much. So I wanted to go back about a week, week and a half. We, the organization Black in law enforcement serving the community are blessed. They were here on July 25th with an amazing food distribution. They had some amazing quality products from Goya. The community turned out. In addition to the distribution, we also had some amazing music from their DJ, and also some great grilling, hot dogs and burgers, and a game truck. So they truly came out, not only to provide food for our residents, but also a great time for our kids. And then, thanks to Councilman Ruben Ramos, my gratitude to him, the Hoboken Police Department, Hoboken Parking, thank you so much, Michelle, for your help, you know, and, and the Hoboken Police Department truly helped us in getting all of these buses out on time. No accidents this year. We had an amazing time in Donnie Park with our residents. Our residents were phenomenal. Thank you, thank you so much. Everyone had fun. Thank you, Director, for joining us. We've been trying to drag you to these events for so long, and you finally were able to drag you out of the office. Lourdes, thank you so much for kicking out the director and telling him, please go and join us. So he showed us a little, he showed up a little bit late, but he joined us, and he had a great time. And also, thank you, Erica. You always help us as a bus captain. And also, Barbara, thank you so much for helping and supporting the residents. It's stressful, right? It's a little bit stressful, but it is a lot of fun. It's, it's great to see our residents and our kids having a great time and enjoying, and then having stories that they can bring back, you know, as they go back to school and sharing, so, "What did you go this summer?" "Well, we went to Donnie Park, and we had an amazing time." So it's great when our residents, when we're the Housing Authority, you know, working with our community, Councilman Ruben Ramos, and then the support of the Hoboken Police Department and everyone, coming together to really give our families these amazing experiences. And, you know, we're talking about back to school. Hopes is having their back to school, August 15th. So everyone, please get ready, August 15th at the Mama Johnson Field. I believe, Ms. Reyes, I don't know if you have some words regarding to that back to school?
Sure, our back to school is August 15th. It's from 1:00 to 4:00. Not only are we giving backpacks to the children, it's open not only to Housing Authority residents, but the entire community. We do require that the child should have an adult with them. We will not give book bags to adults without children. It has been a policy that we've had in place, and when a child does get a book bag, they will be stamped so that we have enough for everybody. So to, to get a book bag, if there is a family that cannot make it on that day, we do allow them to meet us at our location at 532 Jackson the next day, and we will provide the backpacks to the families. So if you can't make it, just reach out, stop by the office, let us know, and we will make sure that backpacks are available to your child.
Thank you very much, and that's going to be August 15th. Please show up. It's going to be from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Mama Johnson Field. I think we're having, what, cotton candy as well? Are we having hot dogs?
Oh, yeah, we, we have, I, I believe Mr. Softy is going to be there. We have...
Mr. Softy.
...the hot dog vendor that will be there giving hot dogs, which we always have. She's someone from here, from the community, which we always hire to do that. And we're going to have a number of different resources from across the county that are going to come and table there.
So please come, and that she's going to be backpacks and school supplies, also going to be Mr. Softy, and also some fun games and stuff for our whole community.
But no cotton, but no cotton candy?
No cotton candy, that is pretty bad.
I don't think we have.
I don't know, maybe we can get cotton candy, hopefully.
They have ice cream, I think they'll enjoy the ice cream.
I think the ice cream, right. So we're going to take a little break then on the 16th, and with the help of the Health Department for the City of Hoboken, we're having opioid awareness day event here, 2/21, from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. We're going to provide information on the risk, right, associated with the misuse of opioids, right, and also prevention and support for those individuals that are suffering from opioid abuse. So please be here on the 16th from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. I think they're also going to have Mr. Softy, I believe, for that event as well. So we hope that everyone can join, it's a very, very important event. And then on the 17th, just in case someone missed, the 15th, Hopes Back to School, the Hoboken Housing Authority with Familyhood, we're having also our back-to-school event, and that's going to be Saturday, the 17th, at the Mama Johnson Field from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. School supplies, fun, face painting, music, games. So please, everyone, come out on the 17th. And I believe that's about it for me.
Danny, you're forgetting one.
I'm forgetting one?
Yes, you're forgetting. The horseshoe barbecue is scheduled for Saturday, August 24th, and the day of the 25th.
Oh, yes, that's under the event, yes, yes, you're right. Actually, you know what? This Saturday, we're having a basketball tournament in honor of Damon Murray, right, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.?
I believe so.
At the Marshall Drive Basketball Court. So please join us for that one. And then on the 24th, we end the summer with the horseshoe, the Hoboken Housing Authority with music, fun, games, and...
It starts at 12:00.
...hot dogs and burgers, and many great things for our community. So please join us. All of this information, you can find it at myhajn.com. Please connect with us on our social media platforms, as well as our Nexo Communication text messaging system. Join us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Daniel. And I've got to just, Daniel, thank you so much for the trips, the hard work of the summer. You really deserve a great round of applause. Daniel, thank you. And that concludes my report.
Director, I'd just like to add about the meeting I had today, earlier today, with the State of New Jersey Mental Health Association. So earlier today, I had a meeting with the State of New Jersey Mental Health Association, and they will, they are going to be working with Ten Reasons for Brief Counseling, for the, not only the children, but the, the young gentlemen who are running the program, who obviously are still grieving the loss of their friend, their brother, and so forth. But I also spoke to her about actually also providing the grief services as a whole to the community, and they are on board. I provided them with the information. They will be contacting Mr. Reckel and Danny to actually facilitate that, and they will then be also working privately with Ten Reasons and the children and, and the gentleman that worked there as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's well needed, thank you.
Is that it, Director?
Quick enough?
You're getting better.
Okay. So Resolution Number 2024-0801, Resolution of...
Excuse me, ma'am, Chair, point of order.
Sure, I'm sorry.
So it's come to this Commissioner's attention that Chair is presently under investigation for...
You don't have to speak into the microphone?
Yeah, let me speak up on that. It's come to this Commissioner's attention that the Chair is presently under investigation for a criminal matter, and as a point of order, the Chair should relinquish to the Vice-Chair in conducting the meeting.
I don't know how to answer that, I have not been notified.
No, keep going.
That's fine.
So, listen, you should not be holding, you should not be conducting the meeting, you are under investigation.
Okay, again, that is what you're saying. I have not been notified otherwise, so I will continue to hold my position until I'm told that I must step down. Thank you very much.
So are you, are you going to...
I would like, I would like to continue this. Again, I'm not doing this, this is not about I, this is not about you, this is about the residents. We need to move on with the resolution, and I would like to continue. Does anyone else have a problem? Okay, so Resolution Number 2024-0801, Resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to approve meeting minutes for June 13, 2024 regular board meeting.
Motion.
Questions, concerns?
Yes, so again, the meetings for both items, the minutes for both items don't accurately reflect what has happened over the last couple of months. The Chair is under active investigation for a criminal matter, and the Chair really should step down and not organize and not run the meeting, because thus far, the Chair has avoided talking about the subject, even though the Chair brought it up. The Chair is making it difficult for anybody to find the truth of the matter and obstructing oversight of this institution. So I really insist the Vice-Chair should take over.
That's your opinion? Can we call the vote, Director? Thank you very much.
Well, that's, okay, that's my opinion. What is Council's opinion?
I think we're in the middle of a vote.
Yeah, David.
No, we're in the middle of a discussion. So...
Motion has been made, and we're in the middle of a vote.
I already asked a question to Council. Council, can you answer me? James, is it?
I don't know what this has to do with the minutes of the June meeting.
The minutes of the June meeting don't accurately reflect what the Chair did and what the Chair was doing.
You made your point, you put it on the record, and just because you don't like the answer, it doesn't mean that we continue to ask the same question, right?
This is a, this is where we have the discussion.
Okay, you asked a question, you put whatever you had to put on the record.
And I would like to be clear that the minutes of the meeting are a record of the actions of this board. There are transcripts that you can go back to. There are, there's a video that's regularly published. If you want to know every nupcranny of everything that was brought up and discussed, you can go beyond that. But these minutes are written to reflect the official actions. When there's a motion, when the motion is approved or denied, it is recorded in these minutes. The talk, cross-talk, conversations, allegations are not recorded in the official minutes of the meeting, and I do not believe that they should be. This is a record of the official actions of the Housing Authority, not of the allegations of a particular member of the, of the board's commissioners.
But for the public, for the, I have to bring to your attention, Director, that for the public record, the transcripts of the Housing Authority meetings do not appear on the website at this time, for July, for June, and it's difficult to access the previous transcripts.
But they, but they will, as soon as those transcripts are done.
Well, they, they, they're, they're necessary.
It was mentioned to me tonight, Commissioner, that there were some missing. I will go back and find out why. I don't know why, but we will certainly remedy that and make sure those transcripts get up.
But we move forward with the vote, Director.
David Edwards.
Yes.
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Aye.
James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes. Resolution Number 2024-0802, Resolution of the City of Hobo, of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to approve meeting minutes for the July 11th regular board meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns?
Again, I reiterate my concern, you are under criminal investigation.
You have to talk to the microphone.
Yes, I reiterated my concern, the Chair is under investigation.
Thank you, Commissioner Stanford, could you...
David Edwards.
Yes.
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Aye.
James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes. Resolution Number 2024-0803, Resolution authorizing the payment of monthly list of bills for the Hoboken Housing Authority.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns?
Yes.
Questions, question?
Sure. Commissioner Rodriguez, Commissioner Sanford asked first, and then I will move on to you as well, okay?
Well, I'll, I'll let, I'll let Commissioner Rodriguez, because you guys go first.
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez, you can ask your questions.
Okay, hold on, babe. Under the, the maintenance, monthly maintenance expenses, number nine, Samuel Kermont reimbursed supplies purch, purchase July 2024, $739.90. What is that about?
Emil? Is...
Emil's there.
Good, Emil's there.
Yeah, there was a, a supplies purchase, and there was also a reimbursement to a body shop that occurred for a, a vehicle accident.
I remember this, yes.
Okay, can when, can I see these reports?
Sure can.
Okay. And then there's another one, the Resident Services, Mobility on Wheels for the trip to Atlantic City, 11730. I had called up Daniel the night before and told him I wasn't going to use it, because I wasn't going. But he said, okay, he would cancel it, but I see we're getting charged.
Yes, we are getting charged for two scooter rentals. This was typically about $50 to $60 for the day rental. So I was not aware that that wasn't used, so I would have to review that.
Daniel?
Okay.
Did someone else use it?
Would you excuse me, sir? I, I can answer that. So it was too late to cancel the mobility on wheels. However, two of our residents who needed those, those scooters were able to use them, so they didn't go to waste. And these residents actually needed those scooters, they just didn't know that they were actually requesting in advance, so they didn't go to waste.
Thank you. Is that all, Jeanie?
That's it.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Stanford, your question?
Uh, yes, first question is general, this is for Emerald. Uh, for any of the plumbing work that was done, uh, that was reported on earlier in the Executive Director's Report, was Guarini Plumbing used?
Unhealed.
Okay. That answers that question. Uh, this question's for the Director. There's something new in the, uh, list of bills, a certification as to the list, I think it's, it's, it reads if bills, I presume it's of bills presented for payment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, what is the significance of this new document?
It's a document that was requested by the Chair of the Finance Committee, um, that just makes it clear that I have taken a look at this, and to the very best of my knowledge that these bills follow all policies and procedures, laws and guidelines. Now, I, again, I've always, I've always assumed my presenting them said that, anyway. But, uh, Commissioner Edwards, I think, came up with a good idea that I put this in writing every month, that I have looked at this and, and, and declare clearly that, to the best of my knowledge, these are appropriate expenditures, if you will. Commissioner Edwards, anything else to add to that?
No, I mean, and part two is, in, in, are looking to approve these, I don't know all those rules and regulations the way you do, so it's just confirmation to me that, that they've been, that those rules have been applied, and, uh, it's just additional clarity for me, and I think they're all, as we approve each one. So there was nothing, there was no specific transaction or anything else that precipitated this.
Thank you. So, moving on then, since you've reviewed these invoices, uh, Director, have you reviewed the Fitzpatrick and Waterman services rendered as general legal counsel, special legal counsel ten issues, N J H F, H M F A grant and rad, June, July, twenty-twenty-four? That's, uh, line item, that's item two on page two, on the monthly order, monthly order. Yes. Okay. And that's in the amount of twenty-three thousand, five hundred, ninety-eight dollars, seventy-five cents.
Correct.
Okay. So, I've had communications, uh, before the meeting with both Council and both Director, and this is for, first question through, uh, to Matt, uh, are you, you're aware of communications I've had with your father, Harold?
Yes, I'm aware.
Okay. Uh, are you aware that he wrote to me regarding questions that I had? Uh, he wrote, "As to the matter of concern that involves a landlord-tenant issue, not a direct Commissioner issue, tenants are never given guidance by authority attorneys. As to an illegal business, factual determination falls to other bodies to address. It is my understanding that the authority staff is taking appropriate action to address the issue." Can you elaborate on that? What, what appropriate action is being taken?
What does this have to do with the list of bills, Commissioner?
Well, this is, this, this is your work product. The list of bills is for your work, and there is, it's twenty-three thousand dollars, you've been billing for it. Uh, I'd like to know, I'd like to get an understanding that you, 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 I've, I've received a legal opinion, I've received a legal opinion that you're not, that Council is not going to be passing some kind of, uh, opinion on the legality of whether or not an illegal business has been operating on the housing floor. That's the impression I'm left with, and I'd like Council to clarify that.
Our job is not to determine legality on something like this. That's left to other authorities, like the Hoboken Police Department or some other body, but that's not our, our job.
So what is, what is the other authority that is investigating this matter?
I don't know. You're the one alleging illegal activity, not me.
I am not the one that's alleging illegal activity. Members of the public have come forward under great risk to allege that, and my understanding from the Director, who sent me a communication yesterday, uh, was that a, a notice from the Hoboken Health Department was delivered to Barbara Reyes, to the Chair. So this is not coming from me.
All I can tell you, Commissioner, is that I think is what you're getting at, is the issue has been addressed from a tenancy standpoint. That would probably best be referred to either the Director of Management or the Executive Director, but I will point out to you, and this would apply to any tenant, not a specific tenant that I believe you're getting at, I don't believe it's appropriate to discuss specific tenant matters in this form. Now, if you wanna go into closed session or something like that, maybe that would be more appropriate, but I don't believe this discussion is appropriate for public session with respect to a person who might happen to also be a Commissioner, but also to any of the members of the public here. They wouldn't want their dirty, their business being aired here like this, so why should any, um, tenant have to go through that? I don't believe it's appropriate.
Okay. So, I think it is appropriate to send a clear message to our residents that there is no special treatment just because a, a person may or may not be both a tenant and a Commissioner, and that message should be made on the public record, it should be voiced, but that is aside from the question that I'm still trying to get an answer from you is, who is doing the investigation, and who is the authority that will determine whether the law has been broken or not?
But, but are you asking in, in, in reference to the bills that were submitted, or are you asking that just as a general matter? Just, 'cause I think they're two separate issues, right? Like, if you have a, if you have an issue with the bill, then I think it's appropriate to ask, but if you have, if this is about the process or how that's going on, I don't think it's appropriate to be asking that when we're trying to pass bills, because there are many other people are waiting for their bills to get paid by our vote.
So it's absolutely, it's absolutely appropriate to speak about it now, because this is the work product of the invoices produced by...
But I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear you...
He answered the question. He answered the question.
And I didn't hear you even ask that specific question.
I did.
But I, I believe, am I wrong in saying that you answered the question, that it's not your position?
See, to the, to the extent that we're getting into an issue of legality, that is not for our office to determine, that is for whatever appropriate body, um, to determine. There was, um, a potential lease violation referred to...
Man, I'm gonna cut you off.
And action was taken, and the Commissioner has been, sorry, Commissioner, the Commissioner has been told that by email in advance of this meeting, and already by me at this meeting. So I believe the question has been...
Here's the very direct question. Did you submit a bill for any work that you did not do?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we move forward with the vote, Director.
David Edwards.
Yes.
Anthony Forbes.
Commissioner Ford.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Aye.
James Sanford.
No.
Erica Sykes.
Yes. Resolution number twenty-two-four-oh-eight-oh-four, Resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to award contract for courtyard improvement fencing at Harrison Garden.
Motion. Second.
Questions, Concerns?
Yeah, can I ask a question? This, this came up before, right? And we, and we...
Yes, in the report.
And I just don't remember, how did these amounts compare to what we had the last time? 'Cause I thought the last time we, we didn't ask it, 'cause it was so incredibly expensive, and these numbers are really high. I was just wondering...
Yeah, the low bit is, is, um, is about seventy thousand lower than the last round of, of bids.
They actually came, those actually came in low.
Yeah, it, it, it was well over our cost estimate, and that's why we rejected it.
No, no, I remember, I'm just...
Um, but now we are within our cost estimate.
God. Thank you.
Any further questions, Commissioner?
Yes, I reiterate, the Chair is under investigation.
Director, follow please.
David Edwards.
Yes.
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Aye.
James Sanford.
No.
Erica Sykes.
Yes. Resolution number twenty-two-four-oh-eight-oh-five, A Resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to reject all bids for Harrison Garden door replacement.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns?
I reiterate my objections, the Chair, uh, running the meeting is under investigation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, yes, um, I, I would like to, I would like to say quickly, um, that I would like to, uh, not table this, but, um, what's the right word?
Uh, to remove it.
To remove it from the agenda, if that's, if that's okay. We did have some late coming information that didn't get to us on this, and I would like to, um, ask the Board, um, to just remove this from the agenda for tonight.
Okay, so how would you...
Um, so...
Should've jumped in earlier.
Yeah, because we made a motion.
You can, you can table it.
Yeah, but let's...
Or we can table it.
Yeah, let's just make a motion and table it.
Okay.
So can we make a motion to table Resolution number twenty-two-four-oh-eight-oh-five?
Motion.
Second.
David Edwards.
Yes.
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Aye.
James Sanford.
Stay.
Erica Sykes.
Yes.
And thank you for that.
Resolution number twenty-two-four-oh-eight-oh-six, A Resolution of the, of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to terminate the Executive Director's contract.
Madam Chair?
Motion.
A, a question. The remaining resolutions, uh, on the agenda, are there any seconds to any of those resolutions?
Well, I guess we're gonna find out, one by one.
Well, I'm asking the question, because if there are no seconds, then there's nothing else to vote on, and then I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Well, respectfully, the order of the agenda is...
Thank you, Michael.
One agenda item at a time.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to close the meeting?
This is, this is completely out of order, this is exactly why the Chair should not be running the meeting. She is obscuring...
She, she didn't make the motion, I did.
Yeah.
Motion to close.
Like the two of you aren't working together.
Anyone second that motion, the votes?
Second.
Second, second, second. Call the vote, Director.
David Edwards.
This is absolutely out of order.
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
What a, what a...
Commissioner, this is Harold Fitzpatrick.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I, I have to interrupt the vote. I'm sorry, but I have to say something. We prepare resolutions based upon requests for Commissioners. That's one policy of the Authority that we honor very carefully. The next series of resolutions, as Commissioner Russo points out, were all placed on the agenda at the request of a Commissioner. But, in my legal opinion, you need to introduce each one, consider if there is a second, and if not, then move to the next one. You cannot simply act on Commissioner Russo's resolution.
Absolutely.
Uh, I apologize for that, Commissioner Russo, but I believe...
Harold, you're the attorney, I'm me.
...is entitled to separate consideration of each one.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Council.
Resolution number twenty-two-four-oh-eight-oh-six, A Resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to terminate the Executive Director's contract. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion.
No second?
There's no second, we move on. Resolution number twenty-two-four-oh-eight-oh-seven, A Resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to appoint Criminal Counsel to assist Commissioner Stanford with criminal matters at the Hoboken Housing Authority. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? There's no motion, Resolution fails. Um, Resolution number twenty-two-four-oh-eight-oh-eight, A Resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to request that the Department of Housing and Urban Development begin Department of Federal Programs process in response to Frank Reyes' criminal federal conviction. Is there a motion?
Motion, and, uh, Madam Chair, that's, that's debarment, not department.
Debarment, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, debarment of federal programs process in response to Frank Reyes' criminal federal conviction. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? There's no second, Resolution fails. Resolution number twenty-two-four-oh-eight-oh-nine, A Resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to recommend the U.S. Attorney the maximum sentence prescribed by law to the plea agreement between the government and former H H A Executive Director Carmelo Garcia. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Come on, guys, this is a layup. This is easy, guys. Someone second it.
There's no second, motion fails. Resolution number twenty-two-four-oh-eight-ten, A Resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to terminate the memorandum of understanding between the Housing, the Hoboken Housing Authority and the City of Hoboken. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion.
Is there a second? There's no second, motion, Resolution fails. Resolution number twenty-two-four-oh-eight-one-one, A Resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to rescind authorization of the Hoboken Housing Authority redevelopment plan. Is there a motion? Is there a second? There's no second, Resolution fails. Resolution number twenty-two-four-oh-eight-twelve, A Resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to terminate the contract between the Hoboken Housing Authority and Reno and Kavanaugh? Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion.
Is there a second? There's no second, Resolution fails. Resolution number twenty-two-four-oh-eight-point-thirteen, A Resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to terminate the contract between the Hoboken Housing Authority and Fitzpatrick and Waterman. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion.
Is there a second? There's no second, Resolution fails. Resolution number twenty-two-four-oh-eight-fourteen, A Resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to redraw, withdraw the request for proposals for development partners for repositioning of public housing.